Welcome to the forum for candidates for the August 13th primary election for Ramsey City Council at Large. The forum is being recorded by QCTV for multiple showings. Thank you, QCTV. Editing is only authorized for official media reporting excerpts. Edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. Meet the candidate forums are held without a live audience and voters' questions were submitted online for the candidates. I'm Sandy Connor, the forum moderator and a member of the League of Women Voters, Anoka Blaine Kuhn Rapids area, the sponsor of this forum. I live in Blaine, so I can't vote for any of these candidates. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. I'm sure these candidates care very much who you vote for, but the League does not. The League does hope that each of you will vote. The goal of our forums is to help citizens become informed voters. The candidates for Ramsey City Council at Large are Garth Anderson, Kirsten Buscher, and Abizimo Negary. All candidates for this race were invited to participate in the forum. Candidate Abizimo Negary was unable to or chose not to attend. So, welcome to Ramsey City Council at Large candidates Garth Anderson and Kirsten Buscher. In lieu of opening statements, we will begin with two questions which were submitted to the candidates in advance. This will be followed by questions from the public which were submitted in advance. Candidates will rotate answering the questions first. We will end with closing statements from each candidate. For the first two questions, answers are limited to 90 seconds each. So, candidate Anderson, what is your motivation to run for this office? And what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and participate in this forum. I'm very excited to do this. And what really motivated me to run for this position is that I love Ramsey. I think it's a great community. And I think all people, all citizens should get an opportunity to run for an office at some point in their life. Just to, because it's our government and we want to make an impact on that. And so that's really what motivated me to run for it. I've always had kind of a passion for politics. And I want to keep Ramsey kind of a place that is a great place to live, work, and play. So that's one of the reasons why, what motivated me to run for office. And what kind of experience I have, I've been, I've been in, in a number of roles. I've participated on boards as well as toastmasters and have had positions of authority in there as well and decision-making positions within both of those places. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, what is your motivation to run for this office? And what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you for having me. My motivation to run for the City Council at Large position stems from a deep commitment to community and a passion for public service. I've had the opportunity to work in various levels of government and as well as community organizations and gained a lot of really good experience throughout my career. Being able to advocate and outreach to community as well as strategic planning and building strong relationships with stakeholders and community members. You know, and in addition to that, I've also advocated for policy changes that would benefit our community. And I want to make our community a better place for all residents. And I've been in many roles where I've had the opportunity to listen and learn from community members and then take that to the next level. And it's given me a lot of firsthand experience to understand how government works. And I want to be dedicated 100% to the community that I'm in. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, what are your goals for Ramsey's future?
I am committed to fostering a safe community. And I'm rooted in ensuring that this community is vibrant and beneficial, like I said before, for all of our community members. And that starts with safety. And that is with our police departments and our fire departments. So I'm investing and supporting them 100% as well as our public works department. We have a really bustling, busy building community with beautiful new small businesses. And we're, like, I want to ensure that the infrastructure and capacity of our city can withstand that. So investing in our public works department, like I said, and our, our public safety. In addition to that growth, I want to make sure that we are still remaining a charming rural city. And we are focusing on making sure that our building and growth is smart. We have good green spaces still. And we keep some of the, like I said, the rural charm of our community. And when we're having folks come into our community, we're just making sure that it's to the benefit of everyone. And I want to make sure that we have a transparent, collaborative, communicative government within our city. Thank you.
And candidate Anderson, what are your goals for Ramsey's future?
My goals for Ramsey are very similar actually to my opponent. And I, I too really stress the importance of public safety and those first responders. And so I will also dedicate a lot of my time to making sure that the police and the fire are taken care of and given the tools they need to make sure they keep Ramsey a safe community. I also want to hopefully build a broader tax base by bringing in more businesses without, without the raising taxes on the, on, you know, property taxes as well as the other businesses that are there. We'd like to hopefully bring in some more economic development. But the one thing that also want to make sure that I'm fiscally responsible with that. One, one thing I have is my, my background's in education and math. I'm a math educator and so I look at things with the numbers. And so I like to look at things from that perspective and make sure things are fiscally responsible. I also believe that Ramsey is a very unique community. It's got the urban feel in the, in the south and the rural feel in the north. And I want to make sure that we keep that integrity as well and maintain that as a top priority for Ramsey. It's what makes Ramsey great.
Thank you, candidates. I will now ask candidates to respond to questions submitted by the public. Responses are now limited to one minute. And candidate Anderson, to start on a positive note, what is working for Ramsey? And how would you support and strengthen those things?
What I think, what I think is working for Ramsey is I really believe that we do have a great community. And I believe that the, the board, the city council already works really well together. I have sat in on a few city council meetings and have noticed that they, they really work together and talk things through. And I think that, that helps. And that, that's what I would like to make sure that I bring to the city council is that I want to make sure that, you know, we, we are transparent and, and working together and making sure we keep Ramsey a wonderful place to live, work, and play.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher?
I'd agree with Garth. I think we have a beautiful city. And we have a good collaborative city council as it is, and I would love to be in a good addition to that. And I think that we do a really good job already of ensuring that some of the, the money coming in through taxes is, is very lean. And, and, you know, I agree with Garth that I do also have a rational, like, background of numbers. It has to make sense, right? I, I'm currently the executive director of the Minnesota American Indian Chamber of Commerce. So I get profit and loss and how best to run a business. And the city is a business essentially. And so when we're thinking of those things, we needed to, like I said, make sure it makes sense. And I, I really love being able to be somewhere that I think is good for my son to live in and to raise a son in. I have a five-year-old and it's, it's been a joy to be there. So, thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, what areas for improvement are there in Ramsey? And how would you work to improve them?
Currently, I know a lot of our small businesses are struggling with a lot of the construction that's going on on Highway 10. And I think that in a lot of ways, the city has done everything that they can to try and make it so they're not hurting as much. But I think it never, it's never hurts to be more communicative, to making sure that these businesses understand and know when there's going to be closures. And to make sure that we're really advocating for these small businesses right now so they're not hurting so much and doing everything we can to make sure that when we have taxes that they're, they're there for a reason and people understand why that's there. And then just being open with what we're doing as a city. Thank you.
Candidate Anderson?
Can you repeat the question then?
What areas for improvement are there in Ramsey? And how would you work to improve them?
Couple of areas that I think that Ramsey can improve on is the streets and the roads. I've driven on a lot of the roads in Ramsey and there are many of them that are quite full of some potholes. And that's one of my goals. And I know they do have a schedule for getting roads repaired. And, you know, one thing I would like to make sure is that we stay on that schedule and try to get those repaired. But get them repaired so you're not then in, in another year or two repairing those same roads again. You want to make sure you repair them and they're, and they're there for a while. The other thing I want to make sure we improve upon is making sure we keep that green space that we have. Ramsey is one that's got quite a bit of wetland area. And we want to preserve that wetland and make sure we have the trails and the paths we need to, to enjoy those wetlands and the green areas.
Thank you. And candidate Anderson, when new proposals come before the city council, what criteria would you use to decide whether to support them?
One, one of the biggest criterias I would use, and this is based upon my background. As I said, I've got this math background, so I've got a real logical background. And what I really would look at when I'm viewing that is common sense. Does it make sense to do this? Does it fiscally make sense to do it? If you, if you come with a proposal of something that's going to cost $20,000, but you really only have $10,000 to put to it, you're not going to, you're not going to go forward with that. It's just not, not feasible. You're going to have to figure out a way to raise that money. So I'm going to look at things from a fiscal point of view as well as a common sense point of view.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, when new proposals come before the city council, what criteria would you use to decide whether to support them?
I would do a similar thing. Having the current background in business, I would want to make sure it makes fiscal sense, that we are able to get the money in a reasonable way and invest in something that makes the most sense with that money if we're taking money from our taxpayers. In addition to that, I also have a legal education and I would make sure legally it makes sense, it's sound. And doing something that would make the most sense for the most people. And work to make sure that we're accomplishing those goals in a collaborative fashion with, you know, everyone at the table and understanding their position on it in a rational fashion.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, what do you think is the most urgent challenge Ramsey is currently facing?
I would say that currently the, the rate of growth our city is experiencing is, is incredible. And we're all very excited to have the boom in the city and the people moving in and the new small businesses. And we want to be very supportive of that. But as I've said previously, we need to be careful to ensure that what we're doing when we're making these growth decisions is, you know, being mindful of all the public works and the public safety. And that we are growing in a fashion that we're not going to outgrow ourselves. So, you know, being mindful of sewer and septic and can we afford to keep putting that in? You know, our, our police department and our fire department being given the equipment in order to serve and protect our community, are they being invested in so they have the ability to train with all the new spaces and new buildings and even all the way up to the type of buildings that we're building? Are they, you know, how flammable are they? So, just the green space.
Thank you. And candidate Anderson, what do you think is the most urgent challenge Ramsey is currently facing?
I, I agree with my opponent on that with, with regard to the growth. And I was talking to some people last night regarding the growth of building and, and where they particularly live. They live kind of north of, north of Trot Brook. And that north of Trot Brook is really the, more the rural area of, of Ramsey. And what they don't want to see happen is developers coming in there and putting 50-foot lots of land and putting, you know, numerous houses up in there. They want to make sure that stays the, the rural aspect. And I think that's a pressing issue because you, you don't want to grow too fast. And then, you know, you're going to run into a lot of other problems with that. So I think it's really that growth that's, that's the big pressing issue right now.
Thank you. And candidate Anderson, when mortgage interest rates were low, we saw an influx of new residents. As rates rise, this may slow down and growth in property tax collections will slow. How will this impact the long-term plans for Ramsey?
One of, one of the things you can do is as, as the housing and, and the tax base, you know, the less people buying houses or building houses, one of the things you can do is try to get the economic growth through businesses and try to get businesses into Ramsey. We've got a lot of open space still in the core that could, could provide for more businesses to come in. And that's one way that you can, you can kind of build that broader tax base by getting more businesses into the community without, without suffering, without putting that taxpayer suffering onto the taxing the taxpayers more.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, when mortgage interest rates were low, we saw an influx in new residents. As rates rise, this may slow down and growth in property tax collections may slow. How will this impact the long-term plans for Ramsey?
I agree with Garth. I think that we should be bringing in and supporting and investing in small businesses. That makes our city sustainable within itself. In addition to that, I know that there has been an increased tax base due to the fact that we're building more apartment buildings. So there's going to be more taxpayers per acre. And I, I think just like, in addition, we need to just be mindful of what the future holds and kind of see as things progress what we need to do. It's going to be one of those, those things that as, you know, policymakers, we need to be able to pivot quick and make decisions that is best suited for everyone at the time. And so I, I think that we'll have to, you know, as a collaborative group, decide what the best way it is to see the future with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, Ramsey's population is aging. Is the city leadership taking any steps to accommodate this in transportation or accessibility of other resources?
I believe that, you know, since the, the light rail train has been put in, there's going to, there's more transportation available for people, especially to try and get back and forth into the cities. And there are a lot more like affordable and accessible building spaces now within our city, which is great to see. I definitely think that we should be considering ways in which to make our city more accessible to a growing population. And we do have a, an elders residence within our city boundaries too. And so I think that that's a fantastic way for people to be able to communicate quickly to their, to their family members and keep our community members within our city bounds and active and engaged in our city and community events.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, Ramsey's population is aging. Is the city leadership taking any steps to accommodate this in transportation or accessibility of other reservices?
Well, I think the light rail is an example of having that light rail up there. The North Star helps because people can jump on that North Star and head, head downtown to, to work. It'd be nice to, to be able to work close to home. For example, next year, I'm going to be working 10 minutes from home. I'm going to be working in, in Ramsey. So that, that's helpful. And the more businesses you can bring into Ramsey, you can keep people there and, and transportation isn't a big issue. And we do have apartments which usually, we have had a lot more apartments, which is good for young families just starting out, the young couples. My daughter is getting married next year and they're looking to maybe get an apartment in Ramsey. And then they will eventually start a family and hopefully stay there. And I think that's how you can keep that, keep the younger generation staying within the boundaries of the community.
Thank you. And candidate Anderson, should the city council consider and debate foreign policy issues or events which are outside of their jurisdiction in an effort to pass symbolic resolutions? Why or why not?
The nice thing about city council is we are at the local level. And I think the local level government should be dealing with local level issues. We shouldn't have to deal with larger issues. Now, yeah, we do have voting situations within precincts and things like that. And I think that, I think the, the local government should have a say within, within the voting areas. But other larger, you know, more, more global or, or national type of decisions, I don't think the, the city government should, should get involved in those types of things. Unless it directly affects your city, then yeah, then you've got to, then you've got to make some type of a decision with that.
Thank you. Candidate Buscher, should the city council consider and debate foreign policy issues or events which are outside of their jurisdiction in an effort to pass symbolic resolutions? Why or why not?
I agree with Garth. I think if it falls within the jurisdiction of our city and it's relevant to the community, like the things that we are deciding on, we, we should. But if, if it doesn't and it, it has no relevance within our city bounds, then we get to, like you said, be blessed and get to work within our local community. And we should be affecting change for our citizens and making sure that they're the top of our mind and not those bigger ploys. So, thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, how would you make yourself available to hear the concerns of citizens of Ramsey?
So, you know, as I've stated before, I've been really blessed to have held a lot of roles within government and within community agencies. And every single time I've held any role, I've ensured that I have an open line of communication with the folks that I'm advocating for. And so whether that be people know my number or my email address or I'm in community spaces, people have a way to get ahold of me. And it's not something that ends at, at 4:30. It's something that's every single day. And I want my community to know who I am and that I'm there serving them. And that if they, they need me, that they can find me. And if I don't have the answer for something, that I will find it and I will get them connected to the right people.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, how would you make yourself available to hear the concerns of the citizens of Ramsey?
I've always prided myself in that I've always been told that I'm a really good listener. So I have a listening ear for whoever wants to bend it and, and talk to me about things. And, and I will have many open channels for them to, to communicate with me, whether it's via email, through a Facebook page, or, or a website, or even my phone number. And, you know, as, as a public servant and you're serving the community, you need to be there and be ready to answer a question if they have it and go find the answer if not. And, and I think that's very important because we are serving people and we need to hear, hear what they have to say and take what they have to say to heart and, and try to find an answer for them. And hopefully we can.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, how would you work to provide opportunities for residents and businesses to have input on major projects and decisions?
Well, one thing I would like to do is make sure we encourage the citizens to get involved in, in their community. Make sure that they are serving on some of the planning committees and various things like that. And come and have a voice at the city council meetings. Every city council has an opportunity to come and talk and, and express anything that, any concerns you might have. And what I want to make sure is that the citizens know that we're here to serve them and they can come and let us know. And, and if it means they should get involved, maybe, you know, we, we try to encourage them and get them to find a way that they can also get involved in, in doing that. And even getting involved in community events like our Happy Days event that we have every September and do those types of things.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, how would you work to provide opportunities for residents and businesses to have input in major projects and decisions?
Outreach and community advocacy is a specialty of mine. And I would, as the last question, make sure that every community member has a way of getting hold, ahold of me. And through those comments and questions, I would ensure that I am supporting engagement with our community. And so, you know, through city council meetings or planning commissions or things of that nature, asking folks to be actively involved, community events. And seeing how invested we are in our community will make it so the community members want to be invested as well. And the more folks that are willing to speak, it makes the community better because everyone has a different perspective, different backgrounds. And, you know, that, that help, that engagement helps us make our community better.
Thank you. And candidate Buscher, how would you prioritize items for city spending?
I think the important things, as I've mentioned before, are definitely public safety. So our police department, our fire department, our public works department. You know, mentioning roads previously, we need to make sure that it's a safe, you know, it's safe in our community to travel, that people have access to all the necessities, you know, water and utilities. And from there, some of the other things would be making sure that our city staff is also comfortable and being able to work well within our community so our community can work well. And then obviously too, some of the things that are just nice to have, a beautiful community, green spaces, activities for youth and others, as well as like some of the fun things that were mentioned before, like Happy Days and the events at the draw. And along the line, we need to invest in our, in our businesses and educate those too.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, how would you prioritize items for city spending?
I, I agree with my opponent on this is that I think the, the police and the fire department need to kind of be a top priority. They're the ones that create safe streets and a safe community. And we want to make sure they're well, you know, well taken care of and have the tools that they need to make sure that is, that is top priority for them. And then, you know, moving down, making sure that we've got those roads taken care of. And so people can enjoy driving around in, in the city without worrying about busting an axle on a pothole or anything like that. And, and then, you know, taking care of the, the community by giving them the nice place so they can, you know, enjoy the outdoors there. There's so much to see in, in Ramsey and a lot of beauty, beautiful areas. And want to make sure we keep that also taken care of.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, is Ramsey currently funding anything that you think should be discontinued? Why or why not?
Are they currently funding anything that I think that they should be, that should be discontinued? I don't, I don't, I don't believe that they are. I think that they, you know, from what I've seen, the, the city council is pretty fiscally responsible and, and they look at things very responsible and, and they look at things very well. The one, the one area, you know, one thing we don't want to do is we don't want to continue to put in a whole bunch of apartments and just, you know, have a, it's, it's okay to have those, but you want to be careful with how many. So, you want to kind of strike a nice balance with, with that as well as single-family homes. But I don't think they're doing anything wrong because I think they're looking at that and, and making sure that the zoning is correct for those, those types of buildings as well.
Thank you. Candidate Busher, is Ramsey currently funding anything that you think should be discontinued? Why or why not?
I think for the most part, as you said, that our, our city council is doing a really good job of being fiscally responsible, fiscally conservative. I will say that this week at a council meeting, that it was voted in to take back the new state flag instead of having, or take back the old state flag instead of having the new state flag. And this is problematic because we, they also voted against getting equipment for the police department, against getting equipment that'll be beneficial for city workers. So, we've thrown away the old flags. We've got new flags. And now we're going to throw away the new flags we just bought and buy old flags again. And, and that may seem silly and petty and like a small amount of money, but that's taxpayer money we are wasting on something that's potentially a symbolic thing. And, you know, our, our police department should have been invested in, in that meeting.
Thank you. Candidate Busher, should Ramsey be funding any projects that are not currently included in the current city budget? Why or why not?
If they're good projects, sure. I, I guess I'm not aware of anything that's on the table that we're not currently funding and potential reasons for not funding that. But I think that we should remain open as a city for projects to come in, for us to review it, see if it makes sense monetarily and if it makes sense for our community, along with the, the zoning, as you know, Garth had mentioned, in addition to trying to keep that green space.
Candidate Anderson, is there, are any funding for any projects not included in the current city budget that you think should be included? Why or why not?
I haven't dug deep into the, the city budget, but I know that, I, I would think that there really isn't anything that I don't think that they're, you know, funding right now that, that isn't, that they shouldn't be. With that said, I think that there, there's room to make sure that they're looking, to make sure that any project that does come up, that they're fiscally responsible and, and understanding exactly what the finances are in regard to that. And making sure that they're not investing into something that they shouldn't and putting, getting in over their heads, you know, especially in this economic community, economic world we're in where things seem to be spiraling out of control. We want to make sure that we are spending correctly and not, and not funding things.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, how will you work with area legislators to bring funding for projects that benefit Ramsey?
We will look, we, we will look for things that will benefit them, will benefit the community. We don't want to bring in things that will be detrimental to, to Ramsey. We want to make sure we're bringing in good quality businesses that, that fit in well with, with a family oriented type of community. We don't want to bring in, we don't want to bring in things that, things that are not family oriented. I know, I used to, I used to actually run a mathnasium in Blaine. And, and in the strip mall we were in there, they had, there was a massage parlor. Well, we're running a mathnasium, which is for kids, and four doors down, there's a massage parlor. And it was not really a massage parlor. And Blaine, the Blaine city had to shut that one down. And we don't want to see those types of things in, in the community. And, and, and those I will work with to try to get, make sure we're getting quality businesses in.
Thank you. Candidate Busher, how will you work with area legislators to bring in funding for projects that benefit Ramsey?
As I mentioned earlier, I've been really blessed to have worked at every level of government. And through that, I've built incredible relationships with all of the local politicians, you know, all the way from city up to federal. And so I know what kind of plans and programs and funding that these folks are interested in supporting, bringing to the legislator at the state level and beyond. So, I know who to partner with when we're looking for something specific and how we can manage that and work in our favor. And so obviously, although the, the highway work on 10 has been a, a lot of burden, it's going to be an incredible addition and, to our city. And that was through good work at the legislator. So, I'll keep up that good work and fighting for our community on higher levels.
Thank you. Candidate Busher, how would you promote diversity so that all Ramsey residents feel comfortable?
I think it's incredibly important that, as I've said earlier, to listen to every community member and their needs. And everyone has unique needs. And by, by making every person feel like what they need matters. I have worked in the native community for almost the entirety of my career. And I think that's been a really big blessing because I've had the opportunity to learn about a lot of different folks in a lot of different spaces. And I want to make sure that people here feel like they're, they're loved and welcome no matter who they are. And we can do that while preserving our values and securing our future, you know, no matter what our community looks like, it's, it's built up of all of us and we should all be heard.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, how would you promote diversity so that all Ramsey residents feel comfortable?
Thing that makes, thing that makes America great, not, not just Ramsey, but the thing that makes America great is that we are a diverse nation. I mean, if you, we have, basically, they used, you know, they used to call America the melting pot because we brought in everybody from every nation. And that's no different in Minnesota or Ramsey. And I've, I've been in, in many situations where I, I grew up in Minneapolis in a diverse area. And I just, I've just spent the last year teaching in a, in a 99% Muslim school. And I am, I, I love to welcome those diverse ideas because that's what, that's what is interesting is they all bring diverse ideas. And, and so listening to the whole community and everybody and making sure that you're listening to what they have to offer and hopefully implementing some of that that they have to offer as well.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, what would you do to support pollinator friendly areas in Ramsey?
Can you repeat, repeat that?
What would you do to support pollinator friendly areas in Ramsey?
So, as I said earlier, Ramsey is, has a lot of wetland. And so we've got a lot of nice areas that we need to preserve and make sure that we are keeping the flowers there to, to keep those pollinators coming. We, we live really close to a, it's park, it's not designated as a park, but it's got trees and, and a little pond. And, and my son's been going over there every day and taking pictures of birds and, and all the animals as well. And I think that we, we need to keep those and continue to, continue to put up some resources to that and, and continue to increase that. And hopefully put trails through some of those areas so people can enjoy walking through there and enjoy seeing, seeing the wildlife that'll be there.
And candidate Busher, what would you do to support pollinator friendly areas in Ramsey?
So, what's super cool is that our city already has pollinator friendly areas. Conexus Energy has created a space for pollinators within their, their area. And they're trying to make more spaces within the community that have that. And so I think what we need to do is, is support and invest in those groups that are already doing that work and, and offering them spaces that could be multi-use. So, they have, you know, their, their building area and around it is where they have that pollinator space. And I think a lot of like our agriculture land, which we need to try and preserve the most that we can, but some of that is being used for solar gardens. And that's where you can put those pollinator spaces in. So, trying to find multipurpose uses for those areas as well as then being able to maybe potentially offer those spaces to the community to use a community garden. Yeah.
Thank you. And candidate Busher, how would you handle disagreements with city staff?
With respect, with kindness, with compassion, with the, the best I can, understanding where people are coming from. You know, there's always going to be a disagreement. And I think having the ability to just come from a, a place of kindness is, is going to go far. And sometimes looking introspectively, trying to figure out if you potentially are the one that's in the wrong is also very important. And we, we need to make sure that we have differing views because we don't want it to be just a sound space where it's all the same views all the time, or else we're not going to get that diverse breadth of, of understanding within our community. And so I think that it's, it's important to always come to the table with an open mind and try your best to just work through things.
Thank you. And candidate Anderson, how would you handle disagreements with city staff?
Well, I, as I said a little bit ago, I ran a mathnasium in Blaine and I had to hire staff. And we, we would have, I would have staff that might see from a different point of view on how to, how to do something. And even though I was the director and, and the boss, I listened to them. And I think listening to every point of view is very, very important. And because oftentimes, somebody might come from a different perspective and say, hey, this way might work more efficient. And it doesn't hurt to listen to that and follow through on some of those. So, so just having that listening ear and making sure you talk, talk through it and, and look at the pros and cons and say which is the best way to go with this. And not, not immediately get defensive or anything like that, but just listen and have an open mind.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, what changes, if any, should be made to the recycling program in Ramsey?
You know, I don't, I don't know that there needs to be a, any changes to the recycling program. I know that I, I recycle, I throw all my stuff in the bin and, and they come and pick it up. And that's last I see it. I don't see it from any other perspective. But, you know, I think there's ways within the community that we can kind of get out there and encourage a little bit more of the, you know, taking some, you know, having the community involved and just saying, hey, if everybody pitches in a little bit and, and does this. And, and recycling isn't just throwing away, you know, making sure you're putting things in the recycle bin or that. It's just making sure you're reusing things that might, might be reusable and, and making sure you find other uses for stuff. So, maybe you don't have to go buy new, but you can make something out of, out of something you might otherwise discard.
Thank you. And candidate Busher, what changes, if any, should be made to the recycling program in Ramsey?
I agree. I, I can't say that there is any changes that I see. I, I put it out and they come grab it too. But I do agree with the engagement portion. And we can continue to engage further with our county as a whole, Inoka County, to ensure that we're not only just doing responsible recyclable practices, but we're also potentially encouraging people to do other sorts of, you know, composting or things of that nature and trying to make it an active role in the community events, making it fun for the youth to, to learn about it and trying to maybe potentially do some sort of, you know, craft event or something with things to reuse it. So.
Thank you. We only have one question left, and I think it's something that candidates can have a little fun with. Candidate Busher, if you had all the money and authority you need, what one thing would you do to improve Ramsey?
You know, I, I think it's just going to be my number one of keeping it a beautiful rural community. I, I'm from St. Paul originally and I really had a hard time transitioning here. I will be honest. It, it's hard coming from an urban space into a rural space, but then you learn all of the incredible things that come along with it. And our city has done a good job of, of building some of that, you know, those urban amenities. But I want to be here because I feel safe. I, I feel happy being able to be in, in nature. And I feel that this is going to be, like I said before, a wonderful place for my five-year-old to grow up in. And everyone has, you know, kindness in their heart. And I, I wanted, I just want to invest in that. I want to invest in the green spaces.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, if you had all the money and authority you need, what one thing would you do to improve Ramsey?
I, one thing my son and I have been doing, we, we take side trips and, and go visit different cities and different towns. And one thing that I really like, and we've talked about a lot, is visiting some of the town festivals. And I know Ramsey has Happy Days. And one thing I would do is amp that up, make it, make it a little, last a little longer, maybe have a couple of them throughout the year and, and celebrate what Ramsey is about and, and get, get a little bit of that celebration. Put, put more money into those green spaces and trails and, and, and get people out to enjoy what a wonderful city Ramsey is. And, 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 you know, get that out there so people can come and visit and not, not maybe people visit, but who lives there, that they can go out and enjoy what a wonderful community it really is.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. And we now have one minute each for closing statements. And since candidate Anderson gave the first opening statement, we'll have candidate Busher give the first closing statement.
Okay. You know, thank you again for having me. I'm very honored to have the opportunity to share who I am and what I stand for with folks and my, my community. And I want people to know that I'm going to fight for them. And I'm going to make sure that every day they wake up and, and love where they are. And on those days that maybe they don't, that I'm still going to be there listening and learning and taking those steps to make it better. I have been really blessed to build a lot of really great, fantastic relationships with a lot of people in the area. And I know that those relationships will help support our community and our endeavors when we're looking for funding. And I want to say once again too, that ultimately I want us to have a safe community and I'll fight for our public safety departments. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Anderson, what is your closing statement?
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for putting this forum on. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to the people of Ramsey and, and let them know what I am all about. And what I'd like to say is that I am a servant leader and I'm here to serve the community of Ramsey. And I'd love nothing more than to hear from them and, and know that I, I'm here to do the best job I can, listen, make some changes if, if necessary and, and listen to what they have to say. And I'm here to support them. Thing with politics is I'm not here self-serving myself. I'm here to serve the community of Ramsey and I want what's best for them. And that's, that's where I'm coming from. And I, I hope I can have their vote during the primary.
The League of Women Voters thanks the candidates for speaking to the voters about issues and for running for Ramsey City Council at large. Thanks to viewers and those who submitted questions. Links to all forums are located at l w v a b c m n dot org. The primary election is August 13th. Early voting started June 28th. You can vote early at Ramsey City Hall or the Inoka County Elections Office. Please see the City of Ramsey website for additional information. You can register to vote, update your registration, find information on voting options, and find your polling place at m n votes dot org or the Minnesota Secretary of State website. You can also register or update your registration at your polling place on Election Day. If you are interested in League of Women Voters, visit our website at l w v a b c m n dot org. Women and men age 18 and older are welcome to join. Your vote is your voice. Make your voice heard by voting. Make your voice heard by voting in the Ramsey City Council at Large Primary Election.